All right, so welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting, July 27, 2020. It is 6:02 PM to declare this meeting open. I will at this point entertain a motion to waive the reading of the remote meeting instructions.
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Stillings eye.
Nichols eye.
Waitman eye.
Resity eye. Motion carries and unanimous vote. First order of business would be the minutes Treasury Warrant Payroll approval of those. Entertain a motion to approve them either individually or all together.
I have a question for one of the minutes. It's nothing major, so can we make, can I make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant Number Two, Treasury Warrant Number Twenty-Nine and Payroll, and then we can do the minutes separately?
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion with a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, we will have a roll call vote on the approval of Treasury Warrant Number Two, Treasury Warrant Number Twenty-Nine, and Payroll.
Clock eye.
Stillings eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye.
Resity eye. Motion carries and unanimous vote. Leah, I understand you have questions about the minutes. Are they in its entirety or just a one specific date?
There is one specific date that I had a question on, and I honestly can't remember, so I was hoping that you guys could confirm. It's not anything major. For the July 13, 2020 meeting, the public meeting, the roll call to go into executive session, I know I voted nay on that because we had a couple people that had wanted to give public comment, but it lists also Mitch that you voted nay. I can't remember if you voted nay or not, not that it matters in the scheme of things, but I just don't know for minutes purposes.
Yes, I believe the vote was three to two.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Like I said, I couldn't remember.
Just as a quick thing on the minutes on...
Mike, you're frozen. Is anyone else there? Or are we all seeing frozen, Mike?
Yeah.
Oh, Mike's frozen.
Frozen to me too.
Frozen in time.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Executive session minutes have to be approved in executive session due to the fact that they are not public documents at this time.
Understood.
So those would have to go into executive session under reason number 10 in order to do that, so it shouldn't be approving those up as well.
Okay, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve public meeting minutes for June 15, July 9, July 13, and July 16 with the understanding that we will vote for the approval of the executive session minutes the next time the board is in executive session.
Can I be a pain and pull out the June 15 just because, so can I make a motion to approve June 15 minutes separately because that was the previous board?
I'm sorry? So we're not going to approve those minutes because...
No, we can approve them, but I just wanted to approve those separately and then lump the other ones together because the June 15, Lyndon and Skip weren't on the board at that point.
That's a good, that's a great point, Leah. Okay, so I guess I'll entertain two motions then for the approval of the minutes. Somebody wants to make the motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the June 15, 2020 minutes.
Jeff, it's gonna have to be you to second it.
Yep, I was sorry. I was fumbling with the mute, stilling seconds.
Okay, I have a motion with a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote again just for the three prior board members.
Stillings eye.
Waitman.
Resity eye. A motion carries and unanimous vote. Leah, did you want to make the other motion?
Yeah, I'll make the other motion then to apply, to approve the June 9, 2020, the June 13, 2020 public meeting and the June 16, 2020 public meeting minutes.
The correction, do you mean July?
Yeah, sorry, July 9, July 13, and July 16, 2020, public meetings.
Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Clock eye.
Stillings eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye.
Resity eye. Motion carries and unanimous. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I believe we have several individuals in the audience tonight for public comment. We want to go one by one, Mike. I don't know if you have the chat feature enabled.
Mics on mute. Avenue news are available. We do have Mr. Kanakioli who has called in to speak.
Okay, Mr. Kanakioli, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address.
Louis J. Kanakioli, 18 Blueberry Lane, Rutland, Massachusetts.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of issues. Number one issue, back a year or so ago, maybe more than a year ago, I came before the Board of Selectmen and asked that the Building Department be renamed in honor of Harry Johnson, longtime building inspector and one of the great icons of the town of Rutland. You people approved it. I, through my personal finances, purchased the sign that indicated it was now in honor of Harry, plus I had other signs made for other offices in the brick building because there were no signs up. I happened to be in the brick building or the old library or the public, the office, now administrative office, the other day looking for something, and I noticed that the Harry Johnson sign was gone and the old wooden sign that said Building Services or Building Committee or whatever was now in this place. So my question to you is, when was the vote taken to rescind the name, the title from Harry Johnson's Select Board, Building Board, or Building Office, back to just a plain building, building inspector? When was that taken?
Understood, Mr. Kanakioli. I wasn't there for the original vote on the board, so I'm gonna defer to Mike because it looks like he knows a little bit about the situation.
Yeah, the...
Mike, if you just don't mind turning up your microphone a little bit, I think it will be hard to hear the folks.
Yep. Mr. Kanakioli, you are 100% correct that that, the board took that vote to name the Building Department, the Harry Johnson Building Department. The board never voted to rescind that vote. The sign is still in the annex. It just needs to be put back up. When they were repainting the walls, they took it down, and I just have to keep reminding them to put it back up.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
That was number one.
Yep.
I'm still here, okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much for clarifying on the Harry Johnson. Question number two, or point number two that I have, I am concerned and in fact have joined a group of, on Facebook group that deals with our town of Rutland, about what I was so sorry as a lack of civility happening in this community. I've been here since 1973. Since 1973, I've been involved in a number of issues where I was on the other side of an issue, and we debated the thing up, down, and all around, but we always did it with civility, and I don't ever remember people calling each other out or doing any of that stuff. Now, I'm not accusing any of you of doing it. I'm just talking about in general the tone that has been set or that I, I hear about going on in this community. When I was a selectman, one of my colleagues and I, on a couple of issues, dip it, and we, we took, took each other on hammer and tong because we were both passionate about what position we are, but at no time did either one of us address the other one by some derogatory remark or insult them or any of that stuff. And when that issue was over, we moved on to the next issue, and we, we were there for the good of the community. So I'm asking you as a Board of Selectmen to keep an eye on social media and what's going on in this community and urge people to act with civility. This is the town of Rutland, Massachusetts, that I've been in since 1973, that I raised my three, Mary and I raised our three children here. We love this community, and I hate to see us become some, I don't know, Washington DC kind of attitude where we're gonna cut each other up. So I would, I would ask that you would be aware of this, that you yourselves act with civility towards one another or towards members of the community. So I would appreciate that.
Mr. Kanakioli, just a point of clarification. You're speaking a little bit about your time on the board. I just, I want to make sure that you're not indicating that any of us during any of these meetings have acted in any way that was derogatory towards another or made any comments. I'm not...
I have not seen, I have not personally seen, I've heard, I have not personally seen.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
The time this has come up and I...
I have not personally seen, I have, and when I, when I joined Y2 Chat, by the way, and I wrote a little article about civility, et cetera, et cetera, I got over 100 people that liked what I said. So obviously, there are other people in the community that feel that maybe we've gotten away from what has made Rutland a great community, the ability to disagree with one another but do it on a, do it on a civil manner, and that we don't go backstabbing one another, or that maybe I'll take backstabbing back. We, we don't insult one another, and I'm talking about, I'm not just saying that you, the board, I'm talking about just people in general in the community, which I never remember it being like that, and so I'm just saying that if, if you people are aware of that, that you as a board speak out and ask people to act in a civil manner towards one another. Again, debate is what made America great, and I would never, ever take anybody's First Amendment rights away to debate an issue and to, and to voice their position, but, but I think we should be encouraging people to do it in a civil manner. There seems to be too much of this negativity that is permeating in this country, and hopefully, this is gonna change someday, but we'll see. Anyway, enough on that issue as far as I'm concerned. I have one more thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Kanakioli.
Okay. The last Selectmen's meeting on the 13th, where I called in at 6:00 and was told that the meeting was at 5:30, and then again today. Now, I have made phone calls and there's nobody there. I 100% support the secretary or administrative assistant or whomever that is taking care of the administrator's office or the selectmen's office to be working out of home. I'm 100%. I am, I, I don't want to see people come in and be in harm's way. But I'm asking you as a Board of Selectmen to, to, I'm asking you, why can't the phone calls that are made, say, to the Select Board's office when you hit 3:00 and you go over to the Select Board's office, doesn't go into the home of that secretary, of the secretary? I don't even know who the young lady is, but it doesn't go into her home so that she can pick it up? I've always believed that when we're in the public service area, we should be picking up phone calls immediately when possible, and I would hope that you would look into that the phone line be directed to the person's home, and again, I'm 100% in favor of a person during this pandemic being able to work from home. I think that's terrific, and I think that's very concerning that you people are concerned about the welfare of our employees by having them stay at home, but I would like to see a better form of communication. Again, today, I made a couple of phone calls and I got answering machines.
Mr. Kanakioli, just as an update, the phone lines do go into the, the individual's home is able to access the voicemail machine. I know you had an issue last week when you came in. I believe I addressed it within 10 minutes of you being in the office. We do have an update the Town Administrator is going to be providing later in the meeting that's going to address that issue and how staffing is being handled during the COVID situation. Obviously, we want to respect safety.
Terrific, terrific. Terrific. I'm glad to hear this. And then, what I want to say, the last thing I want to say, I wanted to say on the 13th when I thought it was more appropriate.
We're on the third last thing, Kanakioli. Could you please...
This will be it. This will be it. I don't want to take up your meeting. I know you want to get out of there before 9:00, so I can be long-winded at times. The last thing I want to say, and I preface this by saying, in the last election, I had no horse in the race. It made no difference to me who won the Selectmen's seat. What I am concerned about is that when we had the recount, the recount showed that there was one vote that took Skip and, and, and gave him the majority to win, but that that one vote had a lot of questions, and in fact, there wasn't a clear unanimous decision by the Board of Registros, and that, that there were a lot of questions, and my concern would be that there could have been another Board of Registros that would have voted not to accept that vote. When I won my first election, there was a recount there. I went from winning by nine to winning by three, very narrow victory, but not one, not one of the votes that wound up to be accepted was challenged. So the three votes that I won by were clean, clean votes. I would hope that if this ever happens again, that we would, that the Board or the town would call for a reelection to, to, to define actually who is the winner of this.
Sir.
Because it's always gonna be tainted.
Billy, before you continue, the process in order to call a reelection is my understanding. First, I'll just remind you, and I know that you know this because you've served in these seats, that the Board of Selectmen really doesn't have any sort of purview over the election whatsoever. However, it was our understanding and the way the clerk had explained it to us was that in order for there to be a reelection, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the first measure of business before that could take place would be a recount. If the recount still netted in a tie, at that point, the Board of Selectmen could vote to have a special election or vote to hold the election at the next regular scheduled election for the other seats that are up. That was my understanding.
I totally understand that. I've been through it, and I was a selectman, and I understand the rulings there. Now, there are those, some who argue that, and I might be one of them, and again, I have no horse in a race, so it didn't make any difference to me whether Skip won or whether Sheila won, but to me, that ended still in a tie. Even though that one vote put Skip over the top, okay, if it was a clean ballot, no problem. You wouldn't hear a peep out of me, but there was a major discussion. I happened to be there watching what was going on. There was major discussion, and it was a vote of two to one. So two people in the community of Rutland, and I have nothing against them, I know who some of, I know who they are, and they're remarkably wonderful people, but two people decided an election where over, where about 1,000 people had voted, and I just have a concern about that. I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna do anything. The election's over, it's over. I'm talking about the future, and yes, some things are out of the purview of the Board of Selectmen, but you are the leaders of the town, and I would hope that the Board of Selectmen would take a position that if there's ever a situation like that again, that we go to a revote. Simple. Then it's clear, it's clear cut, and, and no one has to worry about it. But, you know, there are, me personally, I really don't know who won that thing, okay? Anyway, I want to thank you all for your time. Good luck. Keep up the good work and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Kanakioli.
And Mr. Mayor, good to talk to you.
And just to, before we move on, just to address a point there, again, I know that we've gone through a divisive election. Mr. Kanakioli obviously has his opinions on that, which he's entitled to. The Secretary of State's office governs elections through the state. Our town clerk and our assistant clerk acted with the utmost integrity during that process and followed directions to the letter of the law in terms of what was available, and we as a board moved in accordance to the direction we were given. I know it's not unprecedented, but it's a very rare situation, and again, a lot of the officials that we had in charge handled it to the utmost letter of what was appropriate. There was a lot of communication going on, so I think that, you know, in order to move directly to a vote would not certainly be possible, but I also want the public to be reassured that our clerk and assistant clerk managed the situation very well. So that...
And I have the greatest confidence in the clerk. She's, she's top, top, top shelf. I wasn't condemning anybody. I was just pointing out a point of view that, that, that there was a discrepancy in the one vote, that three people, three other people could have seen it completely different, and the only clean way to do something is have a recount. It's not gonna happen. I'm just voicing my opinion to the Board of Select persons under the open meeting situations. Thank you for your diligence.
Thank you, Mr. Kanakioli. Do we have anyone else?
Have a good night.
Yes, you as well. Is there anyone else here for public comment?
I see no, nothing in the Rutland public comment email address. If someone is here for public comment...
You can either unmute yourself and let us know, turn on your camera, use your reaction emojis at the bottom of your screens, and I will inform the chair. I see none at this
Okay, so before moving on, again, this has come up a couple of times. I know that several other board members have expressed concern regarding accusations against board members, unnamed board members from, I guess, you know, dubious social media. I really don't know what's going on, but I can, I want to assure the public and that the board is working cohesively together. I haven't seen any of it. I know that we have different opinions sometimes. Again, I have the utmost respect for everybody on this board, so I'm not sure what's being referenced. So we'll just, I guess we'll move on. Again, I appreciate those comments, but let's try to keep each other out of it here and just move forward as a community. All right, so after public comment, we here have petitions, applications, awards, and presentations. We have a petition from Kevin Jarvie, Milk Room Brewing Company, for the application of three one-day liquor licenses for July 31, August 1, and August 2. Mike, do we have all the complete paperwork?
We have a complete paperwork and payment has been received.
Okay, and what number of licenses is this for Mr. Jarvie?
I would have to go back and look for the specifics number. We are in the mid twenties of a cap of 30.
Okay. So at this point, I'm, sorry, is there a question? Skip, go ahead.
How many, how many licenses are we gonna issue? It's about time, Eddie. Excuse me, go for a regular license instead of this one-day licenses every time you turn around?
Yeah, the alcoholic, the alcoholic, oh, sorry, Skip, go ahead. The Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission approved his final license Friday. We're just, we need the physical copy coming from the state. Just because they sent him the scan of the PDF, we cannot recognize it until we have the in-hand copy. So this should be the last round. We really shouldn't be getting up to the 30, because you do make an excellent point there, but he did get his final copy of a state license approved.
So did, did he come to the town, Mike, before he went to the state?
He informed us that, he did have to go, we, he informed us he was going to the state. Laura has been in contact with him on the next steps because after he gets approved by the state, the town then needs to approve it. So Laura is working to collect all of the necessary requirements from him in terms of his liquor liability insurance, his serve-safe certificate, his common victoriler license, and all the other requirements that are there in order to get a license from the town. So that's a process with them.
Yeah, I always thought you came to the town first before he went to the state. Okay, no, I just, that just gives somebody else a chance, somebody that might have wanted a package store or beer license. Now they're cut out of it because he sidestepped the town and went to the state, but that's all right. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, with normal package store licenses and pouring licenses, you are 100% correct. You do need to go to the town first. Where his exemption comes is under the farmer brewery license.
Okay, I, all right, fine.
No, just letting you know, that's all.
Mike, just for future, if you don't mind speaking into the microphone.
Sorry, I gotta, I have a different, I'm using my Chromebook here, so I just have to remember to move my mic closer to my face.
So I guess at this, my only concern is that I just want to make sure we don't exceed the limit of 30, so I guess at this point, I'll entertain a motion. If there's no other any questions about the petition to approve, I guess, perhaps pending, to make sure we don't go over that 30 limit, put us all on a bind.
Stillings, I'll make a motion to approve the Milk Room Brewing, application for three one-day liquor licenses, July 31, August 1, and August 7, 2020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Waitman, seconds with, just pending that it's still within the 30 cap.
Jeff, is that amendment, you have that amendment?
Yes, sir.
So I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, have a roll call vote.
Stillings eye.
Nichols eye.
Waitman, eye.
Clock eye.
Resity eye. Motion carries and unanimous vote. The second petition we have over business is by Kevin Jarvie, for the Town of Rutland to waive their Chapter 61A right of first refusal on the sale of lots 1, 2, and 3 on Prescott Street. I don't believe we have any clarification from any of the necessary boards yet as to that process. Mike, have you heard anything from any of the boards?
You are correct in that statement.
Okay.
Mike, if I may, I don't want to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission, but last week I did submit a letter from them as far as their vote goes on that.
Oh, okay. I thought that was for the other one. My apologies.
It was for both of them, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yep, there was two separate letters.
Yeah, because we have heard back from everything on the next item, just not, on this one, I guess we've only heard from the CONCOM.
If, Mitch, if I may, do you know if this one went also to agcom? Because I think last time we were running into the fact that it had gone from the attorney to Planning Board, CONCOM, us, a couple others, but not agcom, and I think in our town, we try to send it to agcom also.
So if it hasn't gone to agcom, Mike, can we just make sure that agcom gets a copy?
Yes, Laura did send it to the agcom.
She did, okay.
Both of these, yes.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
So then we're gonna put this on hold through the chair. We're gonna hold this until we get answers from everybody.
Sorry, if I may, looks like Dave has a question or something, Town Planner.
See, Dave has his hand up.
Dave, feel free to unmute yourself there.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Just to jump in really briefly on this, so off of this one and the next one, the planning board will be taking the matter tomorrow night, and we'll have a recommendation by Wednesday morning.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so I guess, Skip, was that a motion to table?
What was that?
Was, did you just make a motion to table the item until next meeting?
Yes, I did.
Waitman, seconds.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Hi, folks. This is Sylvia Rusbazan, 27 Glen.
You're next. You're not up yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
Waitman, eye.
Nichols eye.
Resity eye. Motion carries and unanimous vote. For the follow-up, we have a petition by Celia Rusbazan for the Town of Rutland to waive their Chapter 61A right of first refusal on the sale of Lot 1, 27 Glenwood Place. I'm going to recuse myself from this item and hand the item over to Skip.
Is there any, Mike, did we get any of the, all the people back for this, this piece of property?
We heard from just about everyone. As Dave said, the Planning Board will be meeting tomorrow evening on this matter.
Well, if there's only, we're waiting just for the Planning Board for Sylvia, I don't know why we just can't make a motion to disperse this piece of property because everybody else isn't, has, sees no use of purchasing it.
That is certainly in the board's purview to, excuse me, that is certainly in the board's purview to do, yes.
So I'd like a motion to release this piece of property?
Stillings, a second.
You're gonna make the motion, I think, Jeff, because Skip can't.
Oh, you're waiting on a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, so, discussion, because I don't vote strongly either way, to release the right of first refusal on the acting board for 27 Glenwood Place, assessors match, so 65 offices.
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Stillings eye.
Nichols eye.
Waitman, no.
Clock eye. Clark, aye. So it, it passes, as far as I can see. So Sylvia, you're up to do whatever you want with it.
Awesome. Thank you so much, folks, for your time. I, I know this is something else, but I would like to also ask, since, since I have the momentum right now, I would like to also ask you folks, since it's 2020 and everybody right now, it's in virtual meetings, and you are doing everything by email and virtually, I was, I would like to also ask if the select board can suggest perhaps moving into the next way of technology, perhaps not having, you know, I understand that there is a need of having meetings every couple of weeks, but I would like to see if some of the correspondence that is happening in every meeting, right? Because I have been waiting for almost a couple of months to, to be able to sell this property, right? And as you all understand, this is, I'm, I'm losing almost $200,000 on waiting more and more, right? I would like to see if there is a potential that you can put it on, on your agenda, perhaps the next meetings, when you have a little bit more time, to start thinking about improving some of the efficiency and effectiveness of these meetings, right?
Sylvia, you didn't, you didn't present the paperwork properly to begin with. That's why the hangup was.
Well, unfortunately, I, I, Mr. Clark, I do understand that, right? I, I, I can tell you, I have been at the, at the front of the building for past couple of months, almost every single day, right? Unfortunately, due to COVID, right, the buildings has been closed, right? I have been calling and like Mr., the previous gentleman that was here spoke about not returning phone calls. I have been calling, leaving voicemails. I believe I met Mike Nicholson one time right at the front of the building. I handed him the file because there was no one else in the building. So what I would like you to do, I know this is, my case is already approved and I'm fine, right? But there is going to be more cases like mine in the future, right? If you can start thinking about improving some of your services, right? Because you are here for the community, right? And if person like me, right, or anyone else have to wait for months, right, to get a simple approval, right? That, that you can handle right now by emails, right? I have been sending emails, I have been calling, I have been leaving voicemails, right? I think it's pretty feasible right now in this new time of technology, right? During COVID, and COVID is not going to go away for next couple of months, right? We all know that, right? Perhaps thinking about making your processes a little bit more efficient, because having to wait for every two weeks meeting when you are able to discuss this, you can already receive the material news by email and make the final ultimate decision in this meeting. So we don't have to prolong and waste everybody's times, because I'm wasting your time, and you are also wasting everybody else's time, right?
Thank you, Sylvia. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We're gonna move on. I'm gonna turn the meeting back to Mitch Recity, the Chair.
Thank you. I think, before we move on, I believe Tim had his hand up. Tim, did you wish to jump in? I don't think he's.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm, I'm speaking as a planning board member, not as a citizen. I am really frustrated with what just happened, because there is a process in place, and it just got taken out of process. So tomorrow, my board, elected board, has no say in this process. And I'm going to say, and if Sylvia is on, I'm sorry to say this, but when we went through this process with the solar panels or solar fields that was abutting her property, we followed the process to the letter. Now it's in a reverse situation, and we don't have to follow the process to the letter. I'm a little bit frustrated with this applicant and why the process wasn't followed as it was deemed in this town. So that's all I've got to say for the board. I'm disappointed that my board tomorrow night basically has no say in this. And maybe we say that it, that we didn't want to do anything, or we didn't, we're going to refer it, but we weren't given the opportunity, and that is my frustration. So thank you very much for your time.
I certainly can appreciate that. Obviously, I had to recuse myself, but that's, that's certainly an understandable frustration. And just a point earlier, I mean, the board has a certain amount of days it has to deal with the 61A issue, while within our rights to take our time and make sure it's done properly. So I think that that's that, unfortunately. Okay, so I guess moving on, Mike, we have Town Administrator update.
Yeah, just seeing the COVID pandemic response, we currently have, let me check to get exact here, we have two active cases that will be reaching their fourteen days this week. We have not had new cases in the past ten days in the town.
Microphone, Mike, microphone.
Thank you. Sorry about that. We currently have two active cases in the town. We have not seen new cases come in the past ten days, so it's good to see that curve flattening out a little bit there. But we do ask everyone to please still continue to follow the current regulations and recommendations that have been put forward by the Commonwealth to ensure that that trend continues and we don't see another uptick. Nick, I don't know if you want to piggyback off of anything for this one here in terms of day-to-day stuff in the buildings, but I will say the current operations that we have and signing into our buildings, the plexiglass structures that have been put in place, the future of planning that we're working with the members of the staff at the Council on Aging to put together to try to get our seniors back together in an outdoor, safe fashion as well. Continue, and we will be continuing to work to make sure that we find a way to get back to the quote, new normal, as it's being called.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Nick was gonna go off of that.
Oh, Nick, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I'll piggyback on him a little bit. I did, I made my way over to Community Hall today and just checked it out. Everything was going really well with the petitions and the plexiglass, and all the staff was masked up, and everybody that was coming in was masking up, so everybody's still playing it safe and it's going well.
Great. Mike, anything else?
I would just also touch on the staffing and transition plan that's on the agenda. In terms of staffing, my office has spoken, I guess Nick's and my office have spoken with both Laura and Tamika regarding potential changes to the role and whether or not we have extra staffing in the office during this time period to alleviate the concerns that Mr. Canacchioli voiced earlier. We, you are correct, Laura does have access to all of her voicemails at home. It just took us a lot more to get her actual calls redirected, and that is something we can do, that we recently found out we have the ability to do with our new phone system that we installed a couple of months ago. So we are working in that capacity there. I can say anything that goes to extension one thousand will soon be rerouted to the Chiefs.
Mike, you're cut out, I think. Mike, you there?
Hello? Yeah, I was just asking if you could hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can now.
Yeah. I was just gonna say that in terms of transition, I am still coming in in the evenings, and the Chief is still coming in obviously during the days, as he said earlier. And we will continue to work off of that until we, things go forward. We do have a fairly surprising amount of applicants for the position, and I will say I'm very pleased with that. And it closes at the end of the week, and we will see how it goes from there. You as select board members do have access to see the applications as they come in through your Google Drives.
Great, thank you so much. You and Nick have been doing a tremendous job, and I can't say enough about how, how much work Laura and Tamika have been doing, putting in, just a tremendous effort all around. I know it's kind of difficult with the communications issues and the COVID, so thank you all, everybody that's involved. So moving on the agenda, if we can, we have old business, we have a reappointment reminder. Been asked to make sure that we, you know, to remind the group, we have to make reappointments, was hoping to get some of those done tonight. If we can pull that up, Mike, is this able to share a screen?
Sure.
Pull up the list we have. I know we have heard from almost everyone in terms of reappointments. We have boards meeting, they're starting to meet now. We have some important items on those boards' agendas, so we just want to make sure that those seats are there and secure. So Mike, if you want to pull up the, the reappointment?
Yes, I am currently pulling those up as we speak. Just working to download them.
Great.
Mitch, I had my hand up on the last.
Go ahead, Jeff. Sorry, I didn't see it.
No worries, sorry. So just following up on stack of applications that we're getting in for the TA position. I'm just inquiring, what's our next step on moving forward on this? So it doesn't mean every, every two weeks that we meet is precious time. Are we gonna convene some sort of a search committee or a resume review panel?
We have an update. That was, the update is actually the, one of the items in our new business. One, Mike, you pull that up if you want. Jeff, we can take that out of order if everyone's okay with it. We'll just go through it now real quick while he's pulling up the, the list.
So I would, I would also agree with that, as Chief Monaco just texted me the same thing. So I think everyone's on the same page on that one there.
Oh, okay. So we'll take that now. I talked with our labor attorney last week about how to move forward with the search process. I know that Mike had set up a posting, it was posted on the MMA website. It said to recycle every couple of weeks, so we can field a good number of applicants. Really, the only way to do it at this point, and the way it was explained to me, the way to best do it would be for the board to handle it. We have the ability to discuss resumes and preferences in one executive session. That gives respect to the applicants. So we're not, you know, airing things. At that point, if we have folks we want to move forward with with interviews, as you're probably aware, I think a couple of the members were on the board the last time they rehired an individual. Those interviews would have to be conducted in open session, which obviously is the way we need to go there. Even if we set up a search committee or a board or commission, Jeff, to your point, like we do with some other things and issues, it would still have to be a fully open session. It's still recognized as a government body. So if the concern is about the resumes talking about people's, you know, strengths and weaknesses, that aspect of it, really, for the purposes of initial deliberation and screening, can only be conducted with one executive session. So it's not one executive session per cycle, it's one executive session in general. For example, if this posting closes, and let's say we have ten applicants, because it looks like we were pretty close, we can only go into executive session once, even if we decide to repost the position and field a whole new batch of applicants. I've been told that the AG's office would not view favorably on going into a second executive session there. So does that make sense for everybody?
That would make sense if the board were to be screening and discussing the resumes. Another option would be, as Margaret used to do, she would convene non-board members as a resume screening, and then the board would see.
Still a public body. I asked that question because I think that that was the route that I anticipated we could go. That still would be viewed as a public body regardless of who we appointed to do that, and so it would still be privy to, to being a public meeting.
I mean, that's fine. What I, what I don't want to do is lag. Let's, let's keep some sort of a, if we've got ten applicants, when's the the closing date for receiving?
The thirty-first, Jeff.
Thirty-first, Wednesday.
So if the board is okay with it, what we could do is at the next meeting, if we have a large pool of applicants, if the board wishes to go into executive session two weeks from today, we could do that, and we could have a pretty quick turnaround there on getting interviews set up, if that's something the board wanted to do.
I think that would be reasonable.
Okay.
My input from the TAs on that, or are we doing that right? Or would you like to see it some other way in hindsight, Mike, through the Chair?
I would, sorry, I would highly recommend at least having one executive session.
Mike, you cut out again.
Job requirement would be to bring your own microphone.
Mike, you still there?
Mike, it's showing low bandwidth on your screen here. I think it's something with your dial-in.
Oh, yeah.
You froze, you froze it again.
There you are.
Am I back? Okay. Yeah, apologies. Like I said, I'm on the town's Chromebook here. So it's a little harder to connect. I understand LinkedIn's pain. The, I would recommend having an executive session. That is something that is, it helps a lot, particularly with people who haven't informed their current employers that they're applying for a job. You can lose applicants if you don't have it that way. And which is why some places do.
Is everyone else hearing, Mike?
No.
No.
You're in, Mike. Mike, just, you're back again. Are you there?
Oh, yeah, my apologies. I was just saying, so long as there's an executive session and the board asks people who they think should be there to weigh input to attend, then I think it's a fine deal.
Okay, so it looks like that's gonna be how we move forward, and really, I think the best solution for us to move forward. Are there any more questions about that process before we go back to reappointment? Are we ready for reappointment, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, any more questions about the process for the TA search? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the reappointment reminder. Mike, if you can just pull up the.
So I have a couple of documents here, Mitch, which, just gonna check, see which one you wanted. I have the master list, and I have the three letters of interest that we received today. So which, it's, which would you like to begin with?
I think let's start with the master list.
Okay. And just let me know when you'd like me to scroll.
Well, you have an email up right now. Can we just see it? Okay, there we go. Okay. So obviously, department heads, I don't believe we, we have negotiated contracts, Mike. I don't think we have to move on those reappointments, do we?
Town Council and Town Accountant need to be appointed. And those are the only two department heads that need to be reappointed this year.
Okay, so if the board's okay with it, I think we can run through these and get these things, you know, out of the way in terms of the reappointments. If anyone has any objections, I think we can kind of, you know, speak up now. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Town Council and Town Accountant, or one or the other, if anyone has any strong opinions about any other.
Stillings, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Clark, aye.
Nichols, aye.
An aye.
Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous vote.
Mitch?
Go ahead.
Just so you're, just so you're aware, everyone on this list is up for reappointment this year. Laura went through and removed everyone who was not, to make it easier for the board this evening.
Thank you. So I guess if you want to take them by board and commission, we could take them by board and commission.
Do we approve as a slate?
I'd like to avoid that, simply because there's some questions as to certain boards and charges. So I prefer if we took it through, through commissions instead of individuals, if that helps move faster. So if we have an ag commission, we have applied for reappointment. I don't believe we have any letters of interest for that board. So I would entertain a motion to, to reappoint either an individual member or the entire commission.
Motion to appoint the entire commission.
Second.
I have a motion with a second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote.
Clark, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Jeff, did you?
Sorry, I thought I was number two. Stillings is aye.
Okay, Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous vote. We have the zoning board of appeals. Entertainer, a motion for reappointment.
Stillings, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion?
Mitch, just as a point of inform, just as a point of information, there is one vacant seat on the Agricultural Commission for an alternate. So since that was lumped with the regular agcom appointments, just to note that there is a vacancy there as well.
Okay, thank you. We encourage anyone who's interested to, to apply for that vacancy, and we'd love to see your materials. I have a motion with a second on the floor for the reappointment of Robert Paulson to the zoning board of appeals. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clark, aye. Stillings, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. We have Jacob Morris up for reappointment for the Associate Board of Appeals. Entertain a motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Bones eye.
Nichols' eye.
Waitman eye.
Recity eye, uh, motion carries unanimous. Uh, we have the conservation commission, uh, we have for, for reappointment, Laura Cannon, Melissa Danza and Skip Clark. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for the entire group or for an individual member, um, for reappointment.
So move for the entire group.
Uh, Stillings second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Nichols' eye.
Stillings eye.
Waitman eye.
Clock abstain.
Recity eye, motion carries, four yeas, one abstention. Cable advisory committee, uh, we have Paul Mattson, James Kelly, Peter Crane, Christian Santillo and Corinne Palmer up for reappointment, uh, and it's in a motion for an individual or for. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion with a second for the appointment as, for the group of cable advisory committee. Is there any discussion?
Mitch, I have a question. Sorry, this is, um, I think that cable, if I remember correctly from last year, is one that we haven't updated like a charge or anything. I know that there were a couple of boards and commissions that we are responsible for appointing that don't have updated board, uh, charges. I'm not sure if cable was one. I don't, that doesn't necessarily affect the appointments right now, but I just kind of for us to bookmark it if it's a priority or not.
I believe that there is an original charge and I know Peter would, would probably know. I know that he's lurking somewhere over there, um, if he wants to jump in, but I believe the original charge in that case would not change. I think that we met Leah about either, um, modifying it or altering it, and I don't think that's what was done. Is that, do you recall that?
I, I honestly can't remember what the decision was, if there was no charge or if we were talking about modifying it or not. So I think it's just something we can, we can, I'm perfectly fine proceeding with the appointments and then just bookmarking that and doing a little bit of our research or whatever and figuring out at a future meeting, if that's something that we want to do for not just cable, but any boards and commissions that we have that don't have charges or have kind of very broad or nonspecific charges or whatever. I don't know.
Well, I think there's a few different issues there. If there is no charge, um, that board realistically, we would, in my understanding, is not be able to, the board needs a charge in order to exist. Um, so I'm not sure as to the history of cable. I mean, if you wanted to table until next, next meeting to, to find that out, we certainly could do that if that's a motion you wanted to make. Um, but I understand your concern.
I'm okay with the motion that's on the floor. That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Billings eye.
Nichols' eye.
Waitman eye.
Recity eye, motion carries, unanimous. We have a council and aging committee, um, Carolyn, Simon, June, Wiley. We have two vacancies. Uh, for that board, but Carolyn and June are both up for reappointments. Uh, I will, um, entertain a motion for either individual or group.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the appointment of the entire group, uh, as a group for the council and aging committee. Do we have any conversa- or, uh, questions, conversation?
Uh, Mitch?
Yeah.
Per state statute, annually, the board has to set the quorum of the council and aging. This is because the council and aging, uh, itself without alternates can have anywhere between five to seven members. Therefore, the, uh, it's up to the select board to determine how many, um, constitutes a quorum. Currently, due to a resignation that's causing that vacancy that's there, there are only four existing members with these reappointments.
I mean, because the, yeah, the normal board amount would be five to seven, um, I would, I think we should need to take this motion first for reappointment and then we can discuss that.
Correct. I just want to state what that yellow box was about.
Okay, understood. Um, okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, we'll have a roll call vote.
Stillings eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols abstain.
Uh, recity eye, we have four yeas and one abstention. Um, if we want to go ahead and set a quorum, uh, we can do that, uh, because, uh, the board is normally between five and seven individuals. Um, in my mind, the quorum would be set at three. Uh, I'm not sure if anyone else, um, has any different ideas or views on that. Otherwise, I'm more than happy to entertain a motion for any number, uh, for that quorum number that the board feels is appropriate.
Well, you don't have three, you have two.
That's what I mean, uh, well.
Those are two just being reappointed. There are another.
There are. Three, I guess.
Is that a motion, Jeff?
Discussion, I mean, it's reasonable three, uh, I know they are, they don't have a large number of.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion. Can we move it back to three and if we, they get another member, put it back to five?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
You know what? I like three. I think I like three. I just don't, I know we're seeing a tough time getting people on the, uh, historical commission, these commissions. Wouldn't want to discourage them from having a meeting, of being able to meet.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
I'm sorry, who's, uh, is that Peter? Is that you?
Yes, it's me. Uh, pardon me, I, the board should be voting on the size of the council, not the quorum. Size, size defines quorum. So you should be defining a size of five or a size of seven.
I see now, yep. Okay, so, thank you, uh, Peter, uh.
May I withdraw my motion?
Skip, you draw your second.
I will draw, I will withdraw my second.
All right, so I guess then we have to, we have four members now on the vacancy. Um, the board is ranging between five and seven. To Jeff's point, if it's difficult to find folks to, to get on these boards, um, uh, perhaps five. Uh, but again, I'll entertain a motion for any, any size of the board deems necessary for the council and aging committee.
Uh, what historically has it been?
Five.
I'll just keep it at five, motion to keep it at five, setting for the developments.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a motion with a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols abstain.
Recity eye, motion carries, four yeas, one abstention. Um, moving on, uh, what is Peter? Is Peter still there? Peter still there? Maybe he can, um, answer the question we had about cable, but, um.
He's coming.
Yes, I'm here.
Does cable have a charge?
Not to my knowledge. Uh, I've been told that the original charge has been lost to the mists of time. There was some work in two thousand and three for a new charge, but I don't know what the status was. Uh, cable commission will discuss our charge and suggest one to the select board after our next meeting.
Thank you. Leah, does that, uh, I guess address your question? Great. All right, so moving on, um, we have a memorial day committee. John, uh, Byron, William Bailey, Philip Canal, William Critchley and David Eager all up for reappointment. Um, happy to entertain a motion for any one of these individuals or as a group.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Nichols' eye.
Bones eye.
Waitman eye.
City eye, motion carries unanimous. Mike, if you can, uh, scroll down, we have RDIC, Development Industrial Commission. Uh, we have one vacancy. You recall Karen had resigned. Uh, and we have a reappointment, Douglas Briggs, uh, up for reappointment. We also have received letters for interest for the two vacant seats uh, from Fran Steiner, Jim Soucy and Tim Norwell.
Through the chair, how many is on the board? How many members?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, so there are currently five members of the RDIC. They serve for five-year appointments. Um, under the statute that enact, that was enacted for this particular board, there is no limit to the number of people the board can appoint to this particular commission. Um, that, because since there is no set number in the statute, the board can add or subtract any number of members so long as there are at least three. Two, uh, as you need a minimum of three to have a public body. Uh, so as such, um, there's currently five and the board has the purview to change that.
Just as a reminder of the board as well, um, you know, it's important to get RDICI, RDIC staffed. We have an RFP that's been returned now for the redevelopment of that property. Had several responses, uh, including from our own departments. Um, and it's been, you know, since nineteen ninety-seven was when the master plan for that property was, uh, put forward. Um, not sure, uh, what the current board, uh, has done to advance that. Uh, but we, uh, we have an opportunity, uh, to be able to, uh, to kind of move forward with some things that we've been trying to do for almost thirty years. At this point, I'll entertain a motion, uh, whether reappointment or appointment of new members for vacancies or additional seats.
I'll make a motion to add additional seats.
Uh, well, I think we, we probably need to do the reappointment first, Skip. If, uh, the board wants to head in that direction, simply because we don't know how many vacancies there are right now at this time. So do you want to rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my motion. So we're looking to appoint. We have five members and we're appointing two or what?
Uh, the only person who is up for reappointment this year is Mr. Briggs. Uh, he is up for reappointment, uh, and then Karen Greenwood recently resigned, uh, due to, um, a personal issue, um, that she has been dealing with. Uh, therefore, there are, uh, there is one full vacancy and then one, um, seat that's up for reappointment.
So we do not have to vote to, uh, not reappoint. If we do not want to reappoint a member, we can merely vote new members in and that would displace that individual. Just to clarify that as well. So again, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for either reappointment or the appointment of any one or individual, individual from that list that has applied and looked at interest or all three, which would require the addition of one seat to the RDIC board.
Mr. Chair, I'll, uh, make a motion to appoint Tim Nowald to the RDIC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote.
Stillings.
Nichols' eye.
Waitman eye.
Clock eye.
Recity eye, motion carries, vote is unanimous. Uh, again, uh, we are looking at, um, and we have two individuals that are left that are interested. Uh, we have not moved on the reappointment, so we have a vacancy that's been filled. Uh, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Fran Steiner be appointed to the RDIC.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, we will have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Nichols' eye.
Stillings.
Waitman eye.
City eye, motion carries, unanimous vote. So again, we have one individual left that has applied for interest. Um, I believe that because we have voted on two individuals with the current structure of the RDIC, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, Mr. Briggs has not been reappointed.
As it stands now, yes, unless the board chooses to either reappoint him, again, you could add seats uh, in which he could be appointed to that, same as Mr. Soucy. Uh, however, if the board continues now and just moves on to keep the five, then it would be considered as he was not reappointed.
Understood, okay, um, so we have, uh, one individual left. Mike, just explain the situation. And just so we're clear, you know, just because I, I have a strong feeling about this, the master plan for the Heights property included as a preferred development use, uh, fifty-five plus housing. Uh, we've also talked about perhaps building a, a senior center on that building. Uh, it's my understanding that the RFP received that in response to requests for bids for that property includes the development of fifty-five plus housing and a senior center. Um, I personally believe that, uh, Mr. Soucy, uh, would be a, at least give a perspective as someone who's building fifty-five plus market paid housing in town. Someone that could help oversee the process to make sure the project's viable, uh, things of that nature. So that, that really is my only comment on that individual. Obviously, I can't make the motion, so I'll leave it up to the board.
So through the chair, can we make Mr. Soucy an alternate member? Or does he have to be a full member of this board to have any say in it at all?
Under the statute, um, it, the statute does not allow for alternates, so he would be a full member.
Through the chair, we can add two members though still, right? If we wanted to add, well.
You can add as many members as you want.
Huh?
We can add as many members as we want, as long as the board votes to add the members.
And you want an odd number, so for both purposes.
Uh, that is best practice, but not required.
Well, that, I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Soucy as a member of the RDIC.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a question. Yeah, is that okay, Mitch, if I ask?
Go ahead.
Um, so currently, it's a one, two, three, four, five-member board with what we did. If we add Mr. Soucy, that would make it a six-member board. Do we want to add a seventh member to keep it as a odd number? That's my.
I think, uh, to the, the point later, we can add, if the board wants to, to add another seat, we certainly can. And I, I personally would be for that, um, but I think again, uh, it comes down to if we have someone that's interested or, um, you know, if someone applies, I'd certainly think that, I'd hope the board would consider any, any qualified applicant to, to add a seat if the board decides to go that route. So I have a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Nichols' eye.
Billings abstain.
Waitman eye.
Uh, recity eye, uh, motion carries. We have three yeas, uh, one abstention. Jeff, did you abstain? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh, one may. All right, moving on, um, we have capital improvement planning committee, CIPC. Uh, we have a reappointment, um.
Mitch?
Go ahead, Mike.
We have the solar committee in between.
I'm sorry, I missed the solar committee. Um, I'm sorry, apologies. So we have a solar committee. Uh, we have, uh, Diane Peterson, Norman Anderson, uh, Joe Buckley, Robert Donaldson, Dick Williams and the town administrator position slated for the solar committee for reappointment. Um, happy to entertain a motion for either individual one or all as a group.
So moved.
Go ahead, uh, Mike, did you have?
Yes, um, Diane Peterson is no longer the town's lead assessor. Uh, I'm currently getting Kelly's last name, so you have it, but she would be, uh, Kelly, um, Sazik, S-Z-O-C-I-K, would be the one who would be appointed in that place as the, um, a set, the city's chief assessor serves on that committee, um, as the expert in that field.
Okay, so can we swap Diana with just assessor position?
Yes.
And so, uh, I guess, Skip, can you, uh, withdraw your motion?
I'll be fine with that.
Okay, so with that understanding, is everyone? Okay, so with that understanding, is everyone, everyone understand what Mike just explained? With that understanding, I'll entertain a motion for an individual or the entire group.
For the entire group.
You have a motion? Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Nichols' eye.
Bones' eye.
Whitman, eye.
Recity, eye, motion carries unanimous. We have capital improvement planning committee. I'm going to recuse myself and the board, the board over to skip for this vote.
So we see, I can't see the board from here, but motion to appoint all members?
It's just Mr. Becker.
Mr. Becker?
Second. I make a motion to reappoint Joseph Becker.
Yes, that's what it is. All those in favor? Roll call.
I made the motion, Skip. Did you get a second?
No, I didn't. I seconded for you.
Okay.
Roll call vote?
Nichols' eye.
Still in session.
Pointman, eye.
Clock eye unanimous. Back to you, Nick, I mean Mitch.
Yep, on stuff. All right, so we have cultural council. Only reappointment is Mildred Anderson. Entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Second. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Clock eye.
Nichols' eye.
Pointman, eye.
Recity, eye, motion carries unanimous.
Mitch, I'm sorry, I missed who seconded that. Was it Lyndon or Jeff?
Uh, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Fourth of July committee, a lot of names here, list is in front of you.
It's appointed as a slate.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Nichols' eye.
Bones' eye.
Pointman, eye.
City, eye, motion carries unanimous. Historical commission, we have one reappointment, Mason Rainford. Believe he was just appointed to a, must have been a vacancy, very impressive young, young man. Do I have, I'll entertain a motion?
Still in session, we appoint Mr. Rainford.
Skip, did you?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Still in session.
Nichols' eye.
Whitman, eye.
Recity, eye, motion carries unanimous. Almost done, guys. I appreciate the patience. Earthworks board, we have two members up for reappointment.
We have one vacancy as Elliot Nato has requested not to be reappointed to this committee. The Board of Health will be letting us know who they will be suggesting as their representative to this board and have not let us know yet at this time.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
This isn't, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Skip, you cut out.
I said motion to appoint with the Board of Health's approval of their member.
So it would be a motion to appoint Kate Gervais, is that what you, the motion? The individual that does not want to be.
No, I said with their approval, with the Board of Health's approval. He doesn't want to be on there, from what I understand.
Oh, I'm talking about the other reappointments, Skip, Kate. Elliot doesn't want to be reappointed.
Yeah, he's from the Board of Health, right?
Yeah, but you can't nominate somebody who's not named. You have to wait for that one.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kate Gervais as a member-at-large to Earthworks.
Skip, do you withdraw your original motion and allow for Bay's motion?
Yep, I allow that, fine.
Great, I have a motion and a second.
Still in session.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Still in session.
Pointman, eye.
Nichols' eye.
Recity, eye, motion carries unanimous. All right, we have managed growth steering committee. All the members, because this was formed at the same time, for reappointment. We have a note here that the committee has satisfied its charge. In checking with town clerk, it was difficult whether to determine whether or not official charge was given. I checked with Peter Crane, who seems to be on top of all the boards and committee charges, who indicated that the charge, even if it were unofficial, would be to bring a growth, managed growth bylaw to town meeting and have that approved. Because that charge has been satisfied. The board, it's my understanding that the board would need to take action with a new charge to be able to reappoint this board, or the board would be at this point dissolved.
We have that in a minute. That was our charge. That's not my recollection. Do we have that some somewhere that that's the charge? Is that?
We have, you have your hand up.
Yeah, Mitch, I was just curious. I thought part of the process for the managed growth bylaw and to measure the productivity of the bylaws, if it passed and which it passed. So I would, I would think in my mind, we would want a committee to kind of take over, looking at the data in at least a every-six-month kind of timeline as to how it's going, where things are standing, any hiccups, doing some of the outreach to the vested community members and everything like that. So I'm in favor of keeping the committee together for that purpose and refocusing as a is a follow-up committee, kind of.
I think to that, we would need to take action to prove a new charge. I also think it's important that we know that many of these individuals that are being reappointed are town staff that already serve in this function. For example, it's Dave's job as the town planner to do exactly what you just described. In addition, we have a planning board that is elected. My only fear in changing the charge to something like that, Leah, is that we are using it as a go-around or infringing upon the ability of elected officials to act on the behalf of the planning board. Jeff, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, oh, if I may. So my recollection is entirely different that this steering committee was not created to bring a bylaw to town meeting. The managed growth steering committee was a vote of the board to support the position of a managed growth posture for the town and that representatives from each board, each board would send a representative to the table in there to oversee this position of managed growth, this position. It's not a bylaw committee by any means, and I challenge anyone to find that in the minutes, that that was the purpose. It was a, and that's why if you look at it, you don't have members of the public in there. It is a a selected representative from the major committees of the town to further the posture of managed growth for.
Understood. Thank you, Jeff. I guess just the only concern again is to ensure that, to get the process right, and the board, either it does not have a charge because we can't find the charge in the books, or the charge was to bring a bylaw to town meeting for managed growth and develop that bylaw. Again.
No way.
Jeff, we didn't charge, the board didn't charge managed growth steering committee with any specific charge, I mean this.
Yeah, I just, I just respectfully disagree with the fact that the committee was created to bring something before town meeting that one day.
Okay, well, I mean, if that's the case, then again, there's no charge from the board. So I'm not sure we can. I, look. I'm not sure what we can do in terms of reappointment. Whether the board, we don't have a bylaw for this, this steering committee. It wasn't created at town meeting. I'm unsure how we want to move forward. So again, I'll entertain a motion. We can either table it, I'll entertain a motion to to reapprove everyone. You know, I certainly would not be in favor of that, considering we don't know what this board does. Or the board could, again, choose to make a motion to add a charge to this committee. I think those are those.
Could I make a motion? We table this and look into it a little deeper?
Second.
I have a motion to table this, the managed growth steering committee reappointments. And a second, do we have any discussion? Leah, I saw you had your hand up.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Nichols' eye.
I don't know if I can vote, but I'm a no.
Whitman.
Leah, was that an I? Just not, okay. Recity, eye. The motion carries to table this for further looking at. We have the ad hoc building committee. Help for reappointment next. I'll take, entertain a motion for either individuals or a slate.
Stillings' motion to approve as a slate.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Still in session.
Nichols' eye.
Leah? Okay, Leah, that's an I, I believe.
Yeah, Whitman, eye.
Great, thank you. Motion carries unanimous. And I believe lastly, is this last, Mike? We have a new senior center committee. I think the screen just went out.
Stillings' motion to approve as a slate.
Can we have a motion? We have a second?
Our, so this is not the last one to do, but this is the last appoint, this is the last outside group, yes.
Okay, great.
Second.
Motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Still in session.
Whitman, eye.
Nichols' eye.
City, eye, motion carries unanimous. We have the insurance advisory committee. Just note that there's a vacancy here.
Just as a note to Mitch, this committee is made up of a very specific group of employees. The chair must be the treasurer. There must be a representative who is a retired employee from the town and a representative from all unions and one representative from the non-union employees. So the vacancy we have is from the sergeants' union. They currently have three members in total, and we can reach out to them to see who they would like to appoint, but they approve all of the town's insurance rates proposals that go to the select board.
Okay, that being explained, I entertain a motion to reappoint all those that have expressed interest as a slate or individually.
As a slate.
We have a motion.
Still in session.
All right, we have a motion and seconds. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Still in session.
Whitman, eye.
Recity, eye, motion carries unanimous. We have various positions. If it's okay with everybody, I can read through these because they're internal and we could take them as a group if no one has any objections. Okay. And the sealer of weights and measures, the veterans' graves officer, ADA coordinator, chief procurement officer, municipal hearing officer, WCRTA representative, healthcare benefit consultant, CMRPC representative, Wachusett Earth Day representative, stormwater advisory committee representative, ethics commission liaison, constable, records access officer.
And that's it.
And that's it.
The current vacancies lie in the Worcester County Regional Transportation Authority representative and the Wachusett Earth Day representative.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion will prove as a slate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Stillings' eye.
Nichols' eye.
Whitman, eye.
Recity, eye, motion carries unanimous. Okay, I believe that is the entire reappointments, appointments list. Again, thank you for your patience. I know it's something that came about because the boards are meeting. So we'll whip through these next items. We have old business. We have inner apartments. The transfers must be completed by July thirty-first. Mike, do we have?
Nick, do you have an update on this? You're muted.
I spoke with Dan today. Dan says he'll have those to us by Wednesday.
Just because the board isn't meeting by Wednesday does not mean that these are done per se. That's the town's own guidelines, not official policies anywhere, just so we can round out the fiscal year. Finance committee will be meeting on Thursday on these, so long as they act on them by the thirty-first, we should be fine.
Okay, thank you. So everyone, anyone have any questions or want to kick back? All right, great. And lastly, in our old business, we have the marijuana RFI update. It's been a little bit since we've heard anything about this. Just want to check in. So I asked Mike to kind of give us an update if there is any for the board.
Yeah, both myself and Chief Monaco reached out to Attorney Castanza from KP Law, who is the new cannabis attorney, who took over for Attorney Lockman, who met with the board last year. Attorney Lockman left mid-pandemic and Attorney Castanza took over there. In the board's drives for this evening is a draft host community agreement that the that Attorney Castanza has sent to the two applicants as a counter to the initial proposals that they submitted. And she informed us this morning that she is waiting for that back and forth before a final document is presented to the board for her to hear back. Again, since I have been just in the evening capacity, as was said before, Attorney Castanza is the main contact for these who has been negotiating on behalf of the town on our end.
So what, what is the prospect? And what does the timeline look like moving forward with both of these? Because I know it has been something we've been talking about for over a year now. What are we looking at?
Next meeting?
Okay, next meeting. All right, so you don't have any questions, concerns? I see Mr. Moore. They're in this meeting. I just want to remind you, if you have any questions or concerns, they have to be strictly procedural as you are in current negotiations with the town. Okay. All right, oh, Sean.
I know, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. No, it's, we're, you said we're waiting for Ms. Castanza on, on her reply. She sent me replies that I forwarded to Mike. I mean, what's, what's the holdup? I've answered every question that she has had.
I can certainly follow up on your concerns there, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I mean, like, I understand that, you know, with the whole, it's, excuse my French, sucks. You know, what's going on right now with all this pandemic stuff, I understand. But people still are working and essential workers, I would imagine lawyers are highly.
I think Sean, you're breaking up.
Come, this has been tabled for. Okay, please just act and we'll just move on.
Okay, thank you. And again, I think Sean, you're breaking up a little bit. Again, we're just going to talk about procedure. But it's my understanding we have, we have something in place that we can kind of move next meeting on in terms of one of the licenses, Mike, is that the email was sent out today?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I know it's been a long process for everybody and I don't want to fall through the cracks, so I appreciate the update, Mike. If everyone's okay, we'll move on to new business. We have the Wachusett Regional School District Transportation Assessment. Wanted to at least put an item on here for board discussion. Uh wanted to at least put an item on here uh for board discussion. Um I asked Mike to look into uh what that number was that we've allocated for transportation this year. Obviously, the school committee, I think, is meeting tonight. Um knowing that I think the uh the district has until the first week of August to provide D E S I. With some plans. I know that they've sent out some polling for for the um the parents and the teachers, I believe. Uh regarding remote, hybrid or in person. Um I just wanted to know what the town's options were. Should the district choose to go all remote and there not be a need for daily busing? Uh what that number is and where that goes. Uh Mike, I know you probably looked into it with Dan. Could you just give us an update?
Actually, this one uh Nick took care of.
Oh, Nick, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh Mr. Dee Dee got back to me today. Um. He said that there's there's going to be some more negotiations and if they are beneficial, it will likely be additional savings. In transportation, which will come back to the town. He's not in a position right now to state what those savings may be.
What is, I guess, my question is, what does that mean? When I hear savings? I don't hear that we're going to not have to spend the money on busing that's not being provided. I think there's some concern, I have some concern there as to if we have a line item to pay for transportation. And we're in a full remote environment where transportation is not at all necessary. Um I would think, I would hope that the town would retain those funds. Is that is that your understanding? That's not the case?
I can reach out to him again this week and see if you can clarify that. He's a, he's a pretty vague answer.
Yeah, uh just to uh piggyback off of that, per the district agreement that the town has with the district. Anything remaining in the assessment gets used to reduce the following year's assessment. I'm not sure if that's what they'll be doing, but that's an option.
The money would just carry over to next year's assessment, Mike, is what you're indicating?
Yes.
Okay, we have a question from Tim Narwall. I just see your hand up.
It's actually Karen. Um when I had the conversation with Mr. Dee Dee this year, when there were savings. I was told the twenty five percent savings went into the transportation stabilization account held at Wachusett. It did not go towards reducing this year's transportation. So I would caution us very greatly that it might go into one of their stabilization accounts that we don't get to use.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
If I may, Mitch, I was just gonna say that comes in through the letter that um. The chief received, Nick received today saying that on June thirtieth, the W R S D school committee approved the transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a transportation stabilization account. Um but they don't say anything beyond that as to what the.
Right, it's it's vague, I guess, is my. I just want clarification because I know that we're in unprecedented waters and there's a lot of decisions that have to be made. I certainly don't envy anybody in education. Working in education that has to make these decisions. Um it is a big line item and I know that transportation is very costly. Uh when it comes to to busing our students. So I I just wanted to be able to understand if there are options uh the town has regarding those funds. So I guess Mike and Nick, if if maybe perhaps the board is agreeable to it, you could look into kind of getting some clarification on that funding. Is that amenable?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, uh moving on the agenda, um. We have a uh, we already talked about the town administrative search procedure. If there are no other questions about that. Uh we'll move on to, we have the update from a town planner. Uh I know that we had an R F I out for the Heights property. I think we've received some applications in. Um I think it's certainly under the boards purview to ask for an update as to what those are, what they look like. And I know that Dave has kind of been tasked with uh reviewing these from a professional perspective. Um so Dave, I don't know if you want to update the board on kind of what that process looks like and what the the projects were that were received.
Okay, so um the site's been actively marketed for the last seven months. Um during that time, there have been several R F Ps running concurrently. There was an R F P that expired and was extended. At that point, the town received its total three R F Ps. Uh by that deadline, one from an entity called Harbor Classic Homes and the other two entity uh from the D P W. Those re um those R F Ps are currently under the evaluation phase. With the next step with the recommendation and further evaluation from the R D I C to follow.
Okay, and just for clarification sake, I know that two of these submissions. Were from our own internal departments. I believe one was for walking trails and another was for a uh was a compost.
Uh so actually, under the R F P laws in chapter thirty B, um the. Uh actual content is currently considered executive privilege. Um however, uh once those go to the R D I C after the initial review is done, they all become um. Public documents. Uh I can tell you from the meetings that we've had before this happened. Um because we did have public meetings with the R D I C on all of these matters beforehand, so we can say that there is a proposal that deals with senior housing. There is a proposal that deals with um walking trails and there is a proposal that deals with compost. We just can't talk about in a public session where these go and any specifics about. Those types of proposals that are in those R F P submissions. Uh but we can say that we did receive those three from those applicants for those purposes.
Okay, and again, just for clarification sake, I don't think anybody, I myself nor anyone has seen any of the R F Ps materials. Um we're just made aware of uh the nature of those moving forward. Okay, great, thank you, Dave. So I guess what what is the timeline like for the review on those materials and the recommendation?
There's currently an R D I C meeting scheduled for later this week. Um now that we have three new members, we'll just check that date with that. Um Dave and I are currently actively um. Processing the review. And um hopefully we'll have something by the end of the month.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh the last item of new business is just um email technology. I I did receive uh concern from the clerk. Regarding the Chromebooks, um I know that we set everyone up with town email. Um however, the names in the town email, just because the turnover rate of the boards is, I think, something like uh, for example, like select board member one. At the town address and it's it's hard for the folks and uh the public to understand who they're sending messages to. So I guess uh my question from Mike and to um Nick. Uh would be if we can maybe work on getting some some changes to that to make it easier for folks to understand where they're sending stuff, maybe changing the names of those addresses. I'm not sure what's possible, but it was just brought up as a concern, so I figured I would, I'll bring it up.
Uh Nick and I can certainly follow up with Paul McKenzie, get those exact addresses and passwords in case anyone has misplaced their passwords and then send those out to the board and post the email addresses.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um last item uh for MMA Municipal Advocacy for Senate Bill Two Thousand Eight Hundred and Act to Reform Police. Um included in your packet tonight is a letter uh that I had drafted that I wanted us to look at. Um I know that there's a lot of back and forth going on right now between the Senate and the House about police reform. Um the MMA, which to we belong, uh as administrators and select board members. Has advocated publicly on behalf of all towns and municipalities in Massachusetts openly for this bill. Um not getting into the contents of the bill, but there have been concerns expressed amongst. Uh even local law enforcement in town about how qualified immunity um and the changes being proposed, they would impact them. I've heard uh discourse from parents concerned uh about the changes in qualified immunity. For example, if you have a school age child. Or restraint or something needed to be performed as a lifesaving measure, um how qualified immunity might. The change in that, how might that might open up um officers to, I guess, civil suits, things like that. And uh the Chiefs Association of Massachusetts have come out and opposed um. These two bills. Uh what it's kind of done is created a rift between local law enforcement and municipal leaders. So Mike, if you could pull up the letter, uh what I was hoping to do is get the board in solidarity, uh kind of similar to what Jeff did with the trails. Uh a few months ago, to sign off on something to the MMA. Um simply letting them know that we stand behind our officers. Uh we weren't consulted about their advocacy. Uh regarding either of these bills. And to ask them to make sure that they poll and contact communities prior to public advocacy moving forward. Uh so what I'd like to do, uh it's okay with the board, is if we can pull that up, uh Mike or Nick. Uh just take a look at that and see if it's something we're comfortable with. Again, um this isn't necessarily speaking to the contents of either of the Senate and House bills. Currently, I think they're being. Uh negotiated now. It's more just to the uh the MMA's. Advocacy. Alright, so I'll just go ahead, uh if you don't mind, and just read this real quick. On July sixteenth and thereafter, through online, digital and print publications, the Massachusetts Municipal Association. MMA has advocated publicly for both Massachusetts Senate and House versions of bills, uh in its sweeping police reform statewide. While reconciliation of Senate and House bills has not yet been broached, both bills include fundamental change to the civil service process, collective bargaining. Labor management and qualified immunity for officers. While the Rutland Select Board values the MMA, it is important to note that while purportedly acting as the voice of all cities and towns in Massachusetts. The town of Rutland was not consulted concerning this advocacy, which has created divisions locally and has pitted law enforcement officials against municipal bodies. On July twenty second, the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association publicly opposed both House and Senate bills. MMA's advocacy surrounding this legislation has caused some in the community, including L E Os, to believe that municipal leadership at the local level is at odds with its own policing. The town of Rutland Select Board has excellent working relationship with the Rutland Police Department. All our officers, first responders and frontline staff have demonstrated exemplary service throughout the last several months, during which Massachusetts has lived through a pandemic. Civil unrest and a virtual economic shutdown. The town of Rutland Select Board wishes to convey that we stand with our police department in solidarity during these unprecedented unprecedented times. And urges the MMA to work to ensure municipal leadership is pulled statewide prior to advocacy that would make fundamental changes to municipal operations. So again, I'm just looking for your support. Uh I was hoping to have the board sign as a board and send this off to the MMA, put on town letterhead.
Nicely done, Mitchell.
Let's sign it.
Alright, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Mitch?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Just to provide some procedural background for the whole bill process itself, because the um. The House bill and the Senate bill, though both constituting very vast reforms, were not identical to each other. They have to go to a conference committee. If that conference committee does not agree upon an item by Friday, it is uh killed for the term and has to be re-proposed from start. Uh in January. So that's the current timeline on the bill itself, in case anyone was wondering. Uh however, as you said, the letter was addressed to the MMA for their advocacy stances. Uh but in case anyone else had any questions on what's going on with the bill, I just wanted to clarify that.
And I appreciate that, Mike, and I I know that that's kind of up in the air right now. I'm just, I was just a little nixed when the MMA is reportedly speaking for our board on our behalf. And throwing our officers under the bus.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
We post this on our uh town website, please?
Certainly can.
Facebook.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a comment. I, well, I support the letter. I think that I also support some sort of reform, so I don't think that it's against our police department in town, and I think that. The MMA speaking on behalf of the state as a whole is not necessary in this issue, on such a complicated issue is maybe not the best, but I support the letter. I support our department and I think that there is definitely room for opportunities of growth, so I just want that there.
And I certainly respect that. And again, I think, Leah, that's why I purposely did not try to address. Any specifics in the letter because it's, again, it's just. The MMA really should be consulting with uh their entirety of municipal officials on an issue that's important, so I can respect that. Alright, if we have no other discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Stillings eye.
Nichols eye.
White Men I.
City I, motion carries unanimous. And I believe, just looking here, at that.
Quick, quick uh follow up, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Uh you you mentioned, a few meetings ago, we did uh discuss a letter of support going out to each individual officer of the select board. Um. Where do we stand on that? Or I assume it's probably hasn't even been uh in the draft form? Are we looking for?
A couple of meetings ago, the board voted to sign the letter. Uh the letters have all been signed and distributed to all of our employees.
The officers?
Yeah, yeah, it's the one you came in and signed at the um in the breezeway.
Great job. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so the motion carries. Uh the last order of business uh is adjournment unless there are any correspondence. Mike, any correspondence? Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sorry, Jeff?
Anything from our uh temporary T A uh while you have the board in front of you, Nick?
Uh Mike has been very helpful with uh walking me through everything in a very short amount of time and uh. We're gonna sit together again this week and get my feet wet a little more, so looking forward. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Great, so we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second, Stillings.
Alright, motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clock eye.
Stillings eye.
Nichols eye.
White Men I.
City I, motion carries unanimous. Everyone enjoy their week and uh we'll see you soon.